We'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of District Bus Driver Leah Cipriani.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who did not know Leah Cipriani, she was a district bus driver for the past seventeen years, who passed away suddenly on April 6th. Besides her devotion to the students she transported to and from school every day, she also assisted in the establishment of the tri-community EMS, South EMS, ran the nursery at her church, and was a lover of animals. We extend our sympathies to her family, including her husband, her children, and her grandchildren, as her memory and contributions to the Bethel Park School District will be remembered for a long time. Before I ask for public comments on agenda items, I also wanted to make... Oh, let me...
Mrs. Cook, we need roll call.
Yeah, let's do roll call. I'm moving on to another, um, roll call.
Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Any comments?
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mr. Rose.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Spacusa. Mr. Sustich. We have five members present this evening.
Thank you. There's been some false information floating out in the community, and before we get into our voting meeting this evening, I wanted to ask Mr. Howard to please take some time to once again explain reassessments, millage rates, and revenue-neutral budgeting as it pertains to our school district.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, I think everybody's well aware that this year, um, the county had did a reassessment on all the properties, um, county-wide. Everybody's probably seen some of these assessments and in your own individual homes, seen your assessment go up. As part of your assessment going up, um, the district is, um, under Act 1 of 2006, Section 327, is not allowed to have a windfall because of that. So as we prepare and will prepare and are preparing the, um, 2013-14 budget, we will have to start that budget with a revenue-neutral, um, uh, revenue from our tax collections. So, um, we showed that at our Budget Committee meeting, some of our preliminary numbers on how the revenue-neutral will work. So as we start, um, the 13-14 year, um, we'll have our revenue-neutral, uh, real estate tax revenue number. We'll work with that number and then in turn, if we need to raise any millage to produce more revenue for expenses, uh, we will do that and present those, uh, millage increases appropriately.
But basically what the millage rate will be, it will be set on the existing amounts of, um, assessments, the, the, the new assessments in a community. There will be neutral revenue budgeting, meaning whatever that new number is, has to be the same amount of revenue as the old number. There is no windfall, there is no 5%. Municipalities are different than school districts, but that is for the school district budgeting.
Right, that's correct. And what, what you'll see is our current millage rate in 1213 was 25.49 mills. So we'll see a reduction in that, um, amount to, right now we're at 22.096 mills, that is our revenue-neutral number. Now that number can change as we get some more information from the county. So that, that number's not set in stone yet until we get, you know, all the information we possibly can from the county. So you'll see that reduction as our revenue-neutral number, and then we'll adjust the millage accordingly from there.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries five to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the business meeting of February 19th, 2013, the regular meeting minutes of March 26th, 2013, and the special meeting for general purposes minutes of April 9th, 2013.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries five to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held March 19th, 2013 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and March 26th, 2013 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff reports and Ms. O'Rourke?
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to be able to share the following items of good news with you this evening. Ninety-nine...
I'm sorry?
There they all, all ninety-nine of them. Ninety-nine Bethel Park High School sophomores, juniors, and seniors were recently inducted into the Bethel Park High School chapter of the National Honor Society. To be eligible for induction, these students had to maintain a minimum 3.85 grade point average, complete at least thirty-five hours of community service during the past year, and demonstrate leadership and character. The guest speaker for the evening was University of Pittsburgh Professor of Astrophysics Andrew Zetner, who fittingly shared the wisdom of Yoda from Star Wars to explain the four NHS pillars of leadership, scholarship, service, and character. Congratulations to all of these students for attaining this outstanding honor. Four Bethel Park High School seniors were among the fifty South and West area high school students who were named Outstanding Young Citizens by the Tribune Review and recognized at a banquet at the Embassy Suites Hotel. Congratulations to Juliana Buckwald, Rachel Dunn, Natalie Lox, and Lauren O'Brien. At the banquet, Julie and Lauren were presented with gold medals, which identified them as being among the top ten students at the dinner. The Outstanding Young Citizen Program recognizes high school juniors and seniors who demonstrate outstanding academic and community service achievements. Several other Bethel Park High School students received nominations for this year's program. Congratulations also go out to Amanda Craig, Nicole DeCarlo, Ryan Kusmera, Billy Richul, Nick Solis, Daniel Vatter, Chad Boomer, Stephen Walsh, Liam Wolf, and Brock Zikane. Congratulations go to Bethel Park High School seniors Caitlin Wagner, Audrey Donnelly, and Maggie Donnelly, who were chosen to receive the 2013 Scott E. Fulmer Memorial Student, Teacher, and Exemplary Practice or Partnering Award, better known as the STEP Award. In the student category, the girls will be recognized for their creation of BP BP, the Bethel Park Buddy Program, which organizes fun weekend activities for the special needs students at the high school, and makes sure every one of these students is partnered with a buddy for each of these activities. The girls will be honored at a dinner to be held at Cornell High School in May. And since we're speaking of the Donnelly Twins, I am pleased to also tell you that Audrey and Maggie have been selected as the Bethel Park High School students who will receive the Shasta Award on April 27th at a reception to be held at the Hilton South Coin. Each year, all of the high schools in the South Hills Area School Districts Association select two seniors who have overcome personal obstacles to succeed in school to receive this award. Congratulations to both of these students. Bethel Park High School senior Emily Betts was named a 2013 National Award Runner-Up and Western and Central Pennsylvania/West Virginia affiliate winner of the Aspirations in Computing Award from the National Center for Women and Information Technology in a ceremony that was held at the University of Pittsburgh. The award recognizes high school women across the United States for their computing-related achievements and interests. Recipients were, are selected based on their computing and IT aptitude, leadership ability, academic history, and post-secondary education plans. Emily's award also included a scholarship to the University of Pittsburgh, while she will attend this fall as a computer engineering major. Emily received her first computer at age four and recently built a new computer. She knows Java and HTML and began a techno, the technology club at Bethel Park High School. Congratulations, Emily. Four Bethel Park High School students who attend the Steele Center area Vocational Technical School are in the Extra Effort Award for the third quarter of the 2012-13 school year for demonstrating outstanding attendance, theory work, shop work, work ethic, and attitude. Congratulations to Ryan Dargis, James Hammerly, Clayton Mir, and Michelle Braga. Two Bethel Park High School art students are budding filmmakers, earned two awards at the Vision and Voices Art Exhibit at the Pittsburgh Technical Institute. Hannah Snyder and Marlena Mir earned first place in the multimedia category for their video Alexandra's Birthday, while Hannah Snyder also earned an Honorable Mention Award in the multimedia category for her video A Life Unlived. In other art news, Bethel Park High School students Lexi Quigley, Mark Reed, and Gracie Moody, and art teachers Kristen Palumbo and Rob Hooton had their ceramic artworks selected for inclusion in the suburban Pittsburgh Art High Schools April Clay Exhibition, which was held at the Clay Place in Carnegie. Bethel Park was one of fifteen area high schools participating in this program. The Bethel Park High School World Language Department competed at the 2013 Slippery Rock University World Language Competition and was the top school of the nineteen schools participating. Bethel Park took first place in the French, German, and Latin competitions, and third place in the Spanish competition. In the French competition, Bethel Park was first in French IV and V, and third in French II. In the German competition, Bethel Park was first in German III and IV, and second in German II. In Latin, our students were first in Latin II, III, and IV. In Spanish, Bethel Park was first in Spanish V and second in Spanish IV. The students competed by language level and events such as comprehensive, culture, language, and oral. The individual results are on the screen. Congratulations to all of these students for a great competition. Sixteen Bethel Park High School vocalists successfully auditioned and were selected to sing in the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's Region Chorus Concert last month. Congratulations to Holly Brugman, Maddie Carruthers, Liz Alec, Mackenzie Happy, Alex Light, Marlena Mir, Matt Sartori, Lucy Cedar-Franzick, Matt Sarafini, Nick Spagnolo, Skylar Yarrow, Christina Svetik, Zach Lauffer, Ben Moscato, Nick Pallato, and Josh Como. Bethel Park High School was fortunate to have eight of its music students selected to perform this past week in four all-state music ensembles at the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Annual Conference in Erie. Representing Bethel Park in the all-state chorus were Mackenzie Happy, Lucy Cedar-Franzick, Ben Moscato, and Nick Pallata. Our state band musicians were Alex Light and Olivia Dowd. Lucas Beaver played in the all-state Wind Ensemble, and Joe Beaver, Lucas's brother, played in the all-state orchestra. Memorial Elementary School recently held its annual third and fourth grade spelling bees, with the top three spellers at each grade level receiving trophies for their accomplishments. Congratulations to Jack Kutschner, the third grade spelling bee champion, and Anastasia Ananucci, who finished in the second place in the third grade B, and to Anna Kunahan, who was third. Also, it took eighteen rounds to get a winner in the fourth grade B, as Ashley Sapeski emerged as the fourth grade spelling bee champion, followed by Calvin Murphy in second, and Sid Colahachi in third. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thanks for all that good news. Student government, doesn't look like anybody's here. How about PTA, PTO council? Anybody here for council?
Hello, my name is Danielle Wusselman, and this is Bob McCormick. We're from the Ben Franklin PTO Board. Our board currently has four members. Mr. McCormick is the president, Karen McGuire is the vice president, Shelley DiGiorno as treasurer, and I serve as the secretary. Ben Franklin PTO's mission is to promote open communication and understanding between parents and staff of Ben Franklin Elementary. Ben PTO holds fundraisers for supplemental education materials and experiences, supports school and family social interactions, and provides a non-biased forum for sharing information on issues that impact our children. We focus on children first. We feel that Ben Franklin Elementary is like no other. Many parents have commented on the family field that is present. Our children are so fortunate to have the leadership of Dr. Dickinson, our principal, in the entire Ben Franklin staff. Ben PTO is a group that runs very smoothly and is accomplishing and exceeding all of its goals. So far this year, we were able to raise over sixteen thousand dollars. Before the 1213 school year even started, we had a teddy bear picnic in August for all new kindergarten children to get them more acquainted with the school, before the first day of school. We kicked off the year by buying every student and every staff member a bully-proofer t-shirt, as you can see here, to keep up awareness of bully prevention. These bright orange shirts also are used for group safety when the children go on field trips. For new students at Franklin, the PTO sponsors get-to-know-you parties and as well as staff appreciation lunches. The beginning of the school year brought open house, Market Day Fall fundraiser, Elastics Book Fair, very popular Fall Bingo. Students started the year with new technology, where the PTO bought two iPads for student use in the learning support classroom. The nurses' office received new items of clothing for when children have accidents and their parents are in school. The PTO provides assistance to the daycare with snacks and even snacks during the PSSAs. December, we saw Santa Shop during lunch, where Ben's students were able to buy gifts for their loved ones. Breakfast with Santa, the award-winning The Ducky Puppet Show assembly. A cookie walk was created, and all proceeds went to hurricane Sandy victims. We collected over two thousand non-perishable food items for the Bethel Park Police House Food Drive. We worked in partnership with the Police House Adopt a Family Program, and we also sponsored holiday parties. In January, we sponsored our first annual Ritathon, which raised about thirteen hundred dollars. A talent show was held, which showcased some of Franklin's talented students. February, we had a, our first annual science fair. We also had the Peace, Love, and Friendship Dance, which was created to aid one of our own students, Caitlin Parker, who recently lost both of her parents. The dance earned two thousand four hundred fifty dollars in just two hours. And Ben Franklin PTO worked closely with Independence Middle School, who generously donated another five hundred dollars that evening, so it was a huge success. In March, we had the support of Black History Month and Women's History Month. The PTO had an assembly on Marza Parks. We have Sarah's Easter fundraiser, which brought approximately two thousand dollars. Spring Bingo was very successful, raising another thousand dollars. We had an ice cream social and art show, which provided a chance for Ben's students to enjoy their artwork. We added an art auction to the evening, where children had the opportunity to create any kind of artwork at home and bring it to the social to be auctioned off. Each student was able to keep all the money raised from their artwork. In honor of Earth Day, we provided flowers and a pair of kids' gardening gloves for every first grader, and Cub Scouts to plant flowers around the school. In May, we will be working closely with, um, high school for the Parker Family Spaghetti Dinner, scheduled for May 5th at three o'clock PM. We are also currently working with Boyton and Independence Middle School to have baskets made for an auction at the dinner. Ben Franklin has fifteen baskets being made at our school. The end of the year is coming, and Ben PTO is still running strong. We have a non-conventional spelling bee coming up, as well as the year-end parties, Olympic Day, mini field trips planned to various places such as the zoo, Science Center, Pittsburgh Playhouse, Heinz Hall, Andy Warhol Museum, and much more. Ben PTO is pleased to tell all of the Franklin students and staff that they will this year be receiving free yearbooks, courtesy of the PTO. We are also pleased that we can provide these extra activities for Ben Franklin students. We thank every member of the staff and administration and the school board for allowing us to do the things we do. Without a team effort from all of us, this could not be possible. We also have some updates from the other schools as well, too. Lincoln Elementary is hosting a, or actually did host, hosted five-person, um, five-special person breakfast equal third and fourth. They had the opportunity to invite someone special to have breakfast before school, make a practice gather, and share a special memory. The PTO provided snack during testing week. PTO will be sponsoring an after-school Spanish program beginning April 26th. Students in grades first through fourth can participate in this six-week program. April 24th through the 26th will be a spring book fair with a family fun night on the 26th. This year's theme is breeding plus games equals family fun. We're looking forward to field trips paid for by the PTO and Rita's Night coming in May. At Memorial, they have their annual third and fourth grade spelling bee at the end of March. The kids worked very hard on preparing this spelling bee, and congratulations to all the winners and participants. The annual talent show at IMS at the beginning of April was a great success. The kids did a great job showing off all of their talents, and it was a great night for all. May will be a very busy, will be very busy with kindergarten orientation, Field Day, and the final PTA meeting of the year. PTA will be having their chairperson appreciation breakfast for all of the parents who have worked so hard to make this a great year for the students. The biggest event of the year for Memorial, the Fun Fair, is coming up on May 17th. There will be lots of games, auction baskets, food, and more. All are welcome to join us for this exciting event. To round out the year, games start at six o'clock and will wrap up at eight fifteen for all, to gather in our multi-purpose room to auction off the baskets. Washington Elementary, second annual Washington Trail Run is tonight at seven o'clock PM. Over two hundred and twenty students are participating in the Washington Elementary Run Club at George Washington, and they do this once a week during their lunch recess. Tonight's event is a practice run on the Montreal Trail by running one mile. This is all preparation for the Pittsburgh Kids Steel City Marathon taking place next Saturday, May 4th. We have over one hundred students participating in the kids' marathon in the city. This evening, high school athletes, student athletes, and a few members of the IMS family will be there to help out and cheer them on. Healthy snacks will be provided for the runners. Friday, April 19th, with the George Washington Talent Show at IMS. Thirty-seven acts on the stage, including singing, dancing, musical instruments, comedy, and a circus clown act. Next week is Student Appreciation Week, where students will enjoy dressing up, activities carried all week long. Snacks or lunch centered around themed days, including Hawaiian, western Mexican, sixties, and red carpet day will make it an exciting week for all. The PTO is working with Bets to add the festivities with food items being served each day correspond to the themed day. The PTO is organizing a trip to the Cyber Team on May 19th. All BP families are welcome to join for discounted tickets and a ten dollar food voucher. May 31st is the family picnic with a barbecue dinner, games, and a bouncy house, and a number of great auction baskets. Field trip season is approaching with the third grade going to the outdoor classroom tomorrow, and second graders going to the symphony in the coming weeks. The PSSAs and the Terranova testing is now behind us. Each testing day, the PTO provided a healthy snack and beverage for each student and teacher during the testing periods. At William Penn, they had a movie night with a viewing of the movie Brave. They just completed their Sarah's Candy Sale, which benefits the Rosemary Gaynor Memorial Scholarship, and are in the process of narrowing down finalists to receive the scholarship. They completed a spring Bethel Park Sphere of Clara Sale, and are in the process of planning a fall school ice cream social and dance. They also completed a read farm. At Neil Armstrong, Neil's finishing the Fall Fundraiser with the incentive programs, I think that's probably Spring Fundraiser, actually, um, with the incentive programs, games to youth, and limo lunch for the eligible students in May. PTO Council, the PTO Council will be hosting a candidate forum night scheduled for May 13th from 7 to 9 at the high school. All nine candidates will be there to introduce themselves, share their goals, and answer community questions. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Solicitor's report?
A written report has been distributed to the board for review.
Thank you. Now, before I ask for public comments on agenda items, I wanted to make several brief announcements. If you recall, we recognized the Bethel Park High School Girls Basketball Team at our March 26th meeting for winning the Whipple Championship. Since that recognition, we have received a proclamation from State Senator, um, and Bethel Park High School graduate Matt Smith congratulating the team for their hard work, talent, and sacrifices to bring the Whipple Championship to Bethel Park for the first time in school history. We thank Senator Smith for his thoughtful gesture, and we will make sure Mrs. Schuneman receives this proclamation and shares it with the team. I would also like to reemphasize that we have a policy in place regarding public participation in board meetings. We have always been on the honor system regarding resident versus non-resident comments, and we would like to continue in that manner. We ask that you provide your Bethel Park address at the microphone, or if you are a non-resident, that you submit a written request to speak 24 hours prior to our meeting, as stipulated in our policy. This evening, we will also be using a timer that we started at our committee meeting last week that will be visible to the speaker at the microphone. We are hopeful that this procedure will allow everyone who is interested in sharing their thoughts with the board a fair opportunity to do so. When your two minutes are up, the timer will indicate this, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. I will now open the microphone for public comments on agenda items. Agenda items only.
Hello, Brenda Daysore, 3224 Rappaport Road. I just have a question under other item two, the resolution for how we can reform of cybercrime school funding. When you get there, if someone could, I don't know if you were planning to read the resolution or give us some information as to what that's about. Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items? Then we will move into business items. Mr. Means, will you take curriculum committee for me this evening?
Yes, I will. There are two items in the curriculum committee. Would anybody like to have either of those withheld? Seeing no objections, I would move to have item number one, curriculum facilitators for 2013-2014, and item number two, curricular writing for 2013-2014 approved.
Second.
Items one and two, under curriculum committee, have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on these two items? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five to zero. Personnel committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are twelve items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out? If not, I move item number one, approval of substitutes. Item two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program. Three, approval of leave of absence. Four, approval to extend unpaid leave of absence. Five, approval of sabbatical leave of absence. Six, approval of paid interns. Seven, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. Eight, appointment of personnel. Nine, change of assignment. Ten, approval of summer help for custodial maintenance. Eleven, acceptance of resignation. And twelve, approval of Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Thank you. Items one to twelve under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry five to zero. We have no items under Facilities and Services Committee. Dr. Campbell, would you take Finance Committee for me this evening, please?
I will. There are seven items under Finance Committee. Would any of the board directors want to have any of those items held out for discussion? Seeing none, I move that we accept item number one, April 2013 salaries and bills. Number two, March 2013 financial report. Number three, budgetary transfers. Number four, GSBA 45 actuarial services. Number five, renewing the food service contract. Number six, approval of student services contract. And number seven, items declared unused and unnecessary.
Second.
Items one through seven under Finance Committee have been moved by Dr. Campbell and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry five to zero. Policy Committee, Mr. Amadis, would you please take policy for me this evening?
Yes, I will. Since there is only one item under policy, I move number one, policy revision, the final reading of which is number 822, the automated external defibrillation.
Second.
Thank you. Item one, under policy, has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item? There were only some minor language change that was recommended by PSBA, so that is why this is the final reading for this change. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number one, approval of resolution, electronic e-grant signature. Number two, approval of resolution calling for reform of the Commonwealth Charter and Cyber Charter School funding. Number three, change of the May 13th board meeting dates. And number four, student agreement. Would anybody want any of these held out for discussion?
It looks on the floor that number two would be held out for a little discussion. If we could have that elucidated on, please.
Would you want it held out separately or would you want...
Held out separately, no, just for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, we can move them all and we can just...
Hearing none, then I move the approval of all the four items.
Second.
Items one through four under other have been moved by Mr. Ammott and seconded by Mr. Means. Do we have a copy of that?
Resolution?
We've got it. Okay.
Should I just read it? You want to read it? You want to give an update to our residents as to the question?
Questions for an explanation as to what this is. Because of the funding, and Mr. Howard can jump in here, but because of the funding of charter schools and cyber charter schools and the fact that state reimbursement the past two years has not been provided, it's causing a greater burden, financial burden on local taxpayers to pay for children who are in attendance at cyber charter schools and brick-and-mortar charter schools. And so this resolution is simply a resolution asking that the General Assembly adopt a formula for funding charter and cyber charter schools to ensure that funds provided by the taxpayers for public education are equitably distributed to school districts, charter schools, and cyber charter schools, that they reflect the true costs that each incurs to educated students and that the funds are used only for their intended purposes. And one of the reasons being that it appears as though charter schools and cyber charter schools are actually receiving more money than it actually costs for them to educate our children and it's coming out of local tax dollars. That's generally the purpose of this resolution.
Basically, a lot of school districts have been supporting this resolution at their local meetings in sort of sending a message to the state legislature, we hope.
May I say something? Go ahead.
I would just ask that Mrs. Rose, while we're on the topic of the charter schools, a couple of the other drawbacks that we see as a school district regarding the inability of us to have control over the students in attendance and things of that nature with the SARS, could you just briefly discuss that?
Sure. In addition to the approximately $800,000 that we as a district are losing to cyber and charter schools, brick-and-mortar charters as well, for this current school year, we've been facing a number of issues in the way that the rules are formulated at this point for charter schools. One of the examples that Mr. Ammott alluded to is that the public schools are responsible for the attendance of the students who attend charter schools, yet we are not permitted access to their attendance records. We are responsible for taking those students to the magistrate for truancy when they don't fully participate and comply with the attendance rules for the charter, and yet, once again, we can't have access to those records. It's our time and our cost to go to the magistrate to seek out the records, and yet there's the catch-22 that those records aren't made available to us. So that's one of the things. For our regular education students, we send a check of a little bit over $10,000 for each child that attends a charter program. For special needs students, it's about double, about $20,000. We know that in a cyber environment, it's a fraction of that cost to educate those kids. Depending on which scales you use, it's anywhere from $3,000 to $7,000. So, you know, we wonder, you know, what the rules are as far as how the cyber and charter schools can expend those funds and pretty much, there are no rules. In addition, our students who attend cyber and charter schools, if they fail in the cyber environment, we must pay for a second year in the same grade level and yet we're not given any access to their grades or their performance levels in those schools. We simply have to write the check for a second year in the same grade level. As far as the rules for testing, charter students under Pennsylvania charters are required to take the same tests that our students are taking at the state level. However, in the calculation for AYP until this current school year, they were allowed to calculate them differently so that more schools were perceived as having made AYP when in fact, only somewhere between 3% and 7% of the charter schools in the state are actually making AYP with their students. So those are some of the frustrations that we have. I just today put out some information to our school board and to our staff regarding supporting this legislation. So if anyone in the listening audience or in our audience here this evening would like that information, I'll be happy to share it with you. And we ask you to please contact your legislators as soon as possible because this should be coming up for a vote very, very soon. Thank you.
Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Mrs. Rose.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
If a student in cyber school fails to meet their AYP, it counts against our district, doesn't it?
No, no. If they're not making AYP in the charter school, it counts against the charter. However, where it does count against us is if a student fails in cyber and repeats a year and they're in school for more than their K through 12, 13-year experience. It could count against us if that child returns to our school district for our graduation cohort rate. When a child enters kindergarten, they're expected to graduate in 13 years, kindergarten plus 12. If they do not graduate at that time, it goes against that cohort for our records with the state as a failure on the part of our school district. If those children leave our district to go into a charter program, fail there and come back, under the current laws, it's currently affecting our graduation cohort rates. Totally skewed and no fault of the district, but that's the way it's counted.
Mrs. Rose, can you comment on the trends for like the enrollees in cyber schools and in charter schools over the last three or four years in Bethel Park?
It's gradually increased. I would say 10 years ago, we might have had a handful of students. The current school year, I would say we probably have about 80 students enrolled. I believe it's a little bit less than that. We have a few special needs students that are accounting for those funds. And we have not gotten our final bills for the last quarter, so it could exceed over 800,000 easily.
One other thing. If you have a number of students going to a charter school, the feeling by a lot of the people in the public is that, well, we're just spending the money in the charter school rather than within the public school. And before I go any further, I'd like to say I am in favor of charter schools. However, I'd like to point out, if you have 80 students, they're in all different grades and they take different subjects, so what you're doing is you're pulling one from this grade, one from that grade, one from this subject, one from that subject. And it's not like pulling 80 students out of one place where you don't have to have teachers for them. It's scattered all over the place, so there's really no saving. So in essence, we wind up paying double for those students.
Any other questions or comments on any items under other?
One comment?
Yes, sir.
The change in the date for the meeting, and that's due to the fact that the school's going to be closed and there's going to be elections on that day, correct?
May 21st.
May 21st.
Correct. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry five to zero. And now the microphone is open for public comments on anything you wish to address the board about. Your name, Bethel Park address, and you have two minutes at the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Smith and I live in 3277 Silden Road. I am no stranger to this community. I've lived in Bethel for the past 19 years. I am no stranger to this school district or the school board. I've been a teacher, a French teacher in this district for 22 years. I want to first congratulate the board for hiring our amazing administrators at the high school. This team of four is pro-education, as is evident by their support and dedication to its staff and students. Secondly, for our beautiful new high school facility, I am honored to teach in such an amazing, enriching environment. I love it. I feel that as a parent, community member, and teacher, I'm quite well-rounded with my perspective and can perhaps give you a slightly different angle to think about. I have been a teacher for some time in two different buildings, as well as having three children now at three different levels. I know the majority of our teaching staff and they have greatly affected our lives on so many levels. I am here to tell you that my colleagues are outstanding, talented, dedicated individuals. They love our students, as I do. I chose to live in Bethel Park because I noticed this at a very young age. I went on to convince my brother, Dr. Mark Cedar, and his family to move here and later, my retired parents as well. Again, I love this community. I am here to tell you today that at the last meeting, I was extremely saddened to hear people accuse the teachers of walking out on their children, or in other words, of failing their children. We did not. I know that during the strike three years ago, I personally wrote and hand-delivered five college recommendations to five of my senior students. We care about our students. I watch my colleagues go above and beyond every day. Please be aware of this. Many of us have even chosen to live here. I am fearful that my young colleagues may take jobs elsewhere. We cannot afford to lose them. I am distraught that neighbors and my family members are looking for homes outside of our district, simply because of the turmoil we are in. It just looks bad. And I am sure that none of us want this to happen, but this is the reality after three years of instability. Please, 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 please attend the negotiation meetings and work to get this contract settled. It is crucial for the healing of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Paisor, 3224 Rockefeller Road. That was refreshing. For the past seven to eight months, there have been many vitriol attacks at these meetings. We've sat here and listened to teachers and their relations go through the typical union negotiating tactic of attacking the board, the administration, and the solicitor, claiming he is dragging out the process to pad his own pockets. No matter what misrepresentations of truth are brought forth by an individual, the matching shirt members of the audience applaud in solidarity even when a colleague lies about being a Bethel Park resident. Now there's a slate of candidates running for school board claiming they can do a better job negotiating. No matter who wins the primary and the subsequent election in November, no new board members will be seated until December. This leads me to wonder who exactly is dragging out the negotiations. I want to see school directors who will always keep the needs and welfare of our students first above the desires of employees. We all understand the importance of valuing our employees, but it cannot be done at the detriment of the education of our children. I have seen no indication of parents here wanting to punish teachers, as one BPFT member was applauded for staying last month. But it is vital that our adults and the children of this community understand that there are consequences to their words and actions. Walking out and educating Bethel Park children cannot be rewarded, nor can boycotting graduations or willfully lying to parents, students, and the community. Enough is enough. The community knows this is about money and control. It's time for the board and the administration to take control of the school district and for union members to accept that monetary compensation cannot continue to expand without the expense of programs and supplies for our students. Please remember the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Gentile, 567 Chesapeake Bay. I would like to start out on a pause note. Last month, I urged the board members to get involved in negotiation sessions as their attendance in prior sessions were lacking, to say the least. As I drove by the admin building several weeks ago during a negotiating session, Mrs. Cook's car was in the lot. Thank you, Mrs. Cook, for at least being in the building rather than being on the phone call me. I truly thank you for standing by your work. Secondly, to Mrs. Buckley, who is absent today, who stayed the last month, I want to be a zillionaire. For the record, the district has employed me for six years. The past tax year, I was a varsity soccer coach. I also taught six classes, three of which were AP college level courses. I also taught two nights a week from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the alternative education program for students who start with drug and alcohol issues, had violent spats and so on and so forth, a slew of other duties. I cleared $35,000 this past tax year. So to say that I want to be a zillionaire is not quite a zillionaire man. I want what you got, Miss Buckley. That's what I want. Finally, to board members who always reference, "Come to the budget meetings, come to the budget meetings." I'm sorry, but I do believe that is why you're the elected officials, to appropriately handle this situation. It's not my job to attend your budget meetings to make sure you're handling the budget appropriately. The same applies to board members who, two meetings ago, begged the community for suggestions to figure out these contract disputes. This is not the community's responsibility, this is your responsibility. And I implore you, if you are unable to finish the task and if you are unable or out of ideas, then step down and let new, fresh perspective come in and take over to finally get this. Thanks all. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move into board comments. Mr. Means?
Sorry. I was sleeping this week. My name is Mike McGulick. I live at 5444 California Avenue. Comments regarding the current status of the, I guess you could call negotiations, which don't seem to be moving forward, I suggest adding zero for a thousand doesn't get you very far. I'm here to offer my services. I've been involved in disputes between individuals for more than 40 years. A good portion of my time is used to solve disputes. I think I can bring a fresh perspective. I'm available at any time. Feel free to contact me. I'm in the book and I'm happy to lend my expertise to try to move this thing forward. I am confident that if people go into these sessions prepared, understanding your weak points, understanding the opponent's strong points, we'll be able to solve this problem with a minimum of difficulty. If you go in with preconceived notions, resolution is not in the cards. I have one more issue to address in its personal nature. I was here back in August because I'm stuck in the Centrex problem. I've made several phone calls to the district. I get different responses every time. I'm owed in excess of $700. I'd like to know when I can expect it. When I called in August, they said I get it in 30 days. When I called in November, they said I get it in January. When I called in January, they said I get it sometime soon. When I called last week, I didn't get a return phone call.
Well, it's basically out of our hands, but I can ask our gentleman over here to bring us up to date on the Berkheimer, is it Berkheimer? Do I have the right company that is now handling that?
We really, you know...
Do you want to use the mic?
We really don't know where they're at with that. They've got a lot of information that they have to go through and we're just waiting.
It is out of our hands. It is in the hands, it was an appointed company to take over. understanding your weak points, understanding the opponent's strong points, we'll be able to solve this problem with a minimum of difficulty. If you go in with preconceived notions, resolution is not in the cards. I have one more issue to address. In its personal nature, I was here back in August because I'm stuck in the Sentex problem. I've made several phone calls to the district. I get different responses every time. I'm owed in excess of seven hundred dollars. I'd like to know when I can expect it. When I called in August, they said I'd get it in thirty days. When I called in November, they said I'd get it in January. When I called in January, they said I'd get it sometime soon. When I called last week, I didn't get a return phone call.
Well, it's basically out of our hands, but I can ask our gentleman over here to bring us up to date on the Berkheimer. Is it Berkheimer? Do I have the right company that is now handling that?
We really, you know...
You want to use the mic?
We really don't know where they're at with that. They've got a lot of information that they have to go through and we're just waiting.
It is out of our hands. It is in the hands, it was an appointed company to take over and they are fielding through all of the records that they have.
I'm not trying to be compensational, but the most frustrating thing about this whole process is I continue to receive a bill for my taxes. I continue to pay them. If I was a year late in paying taxes, someone would be banging on my door asking for interest and penalties. I come here and ask where's the money that I'm doing owing? And I get, it's out of our hands. I'm sorry. It's not out of your hands.
It is, sir.
You need to be proactive. We can, we need that from you. You need to be proactive. If you're not proactive, tell me where I can go. I have resources. I'm a lawyer. I'm happy to do whatever is necessary to get that. If they need information, I'll bet if you put in your newsletter, anybody who's owed money, turn in your nineteen, two thousand eleven tax return. It'll be out there within three days.
Mike, do you want to address that at all? Is there anything further that you can say?
I mean, I think, in all honesty, I think that Lenny and Matt can address that better than I can. People in our office that handle tax matters, I would have to confer with them, but I really can't respond to that.
Well, a response that we don't know where it's at is unacceptable.
No, it's not, sir. It's not we don't know where it's at. It's that this district doesn't have control over what is going on right now. There is an entity that has been assigned to handle the situation. They're in the process of going through all of it. They are doing whatever auditing and paperwork needs to be done to ascertain who is owed what. And they, and we do not have the ability to have control over that. They are the ones that are doing it. And what you're hearing from Mr. Karazi is that we, the district itself, is also waiting for this information. So...
Not an acceptable response. You need to be more proactive.
I'm telling you, there's nothing that we can do.
I'll bet if you work hard at it, you might be able to...
Let me suggest this. You indicated that you have an attorney if you would like your legal counsel. If you would like your legal counsel to call my office, we'd be more than happy to talk to your attorney about the situation and explain it to him so that he can explain it to you.
I am the attorney.
Well, I thought you said you had an attorney.
No. I am the attorney. And I'm asking for the information. I'm sure everybody else here would like to hear it. Feel free to speak.
You know, the best we can do at this point, Mrs. Cook, is to follow up on this gentleman's information with Berkheimer and see what information we can find. We can also, at that point in time, publish the status of where they're at in the process.
That's what I was told last August and now it's April. You don't blame me if I'm not real excited about that response.
I understand, sir. I've heard from many other taxpayers, but it is truly out of our hands as a board. The state has appointed Berkheimer as the taxi agency that is to go through all of these records and to get back to all of us.
I'll make the phone call. Since you won't explain it in public forum, you can address it to the over the telephone.
That's the best, that I would be able to explain it to you over the telephone or in public forum.
Well, I'm here listening.
Bethel Park District. Am I about to address any of Mike's questions? Am I able to get understanding of Sentex and how it works? Well, I also have read, or I guess there are records that belong there. And I was saying, so many, four markets, the national, whatever. But somehow, I agree, somehow someone should know. Yeah, we have about thirty thousand of our, our events. And Sentex, even though their records are not there, must be sent certain amount of time to never collect here or take security records. It lost somewhere in Canada. And I was here with Mike, this is the other day. I think that'd be pretty typical, especially under the circumstances now, how everybody's worried about it. And seven hundred dollars is not the same as it. But it's not always right. I, you know, I'm sure you guys realize too, he needs an answer. And he doesn't want to go into those six months, twelve months. Is there something, you know, he can do, we can do to help, or they all have records. He sometimes do the results, sometimes not. He needs that. The law doesn't stop, we are stopped somewhere.
Well, again, another company has been appointed to take over for Sentex and they are trying to identify what records they can identify and trace back just what you were alluding to.
Yeah, what would happen is, for example, first I take the bill, is that he's owed seven hundred dollars?
We certainly hope not. We hope that isn't the outcome. We won't know. This company that's been appointed will be advising us as well as any taxpayers that are in that situation. And there are other taxpayers that are in that same situation, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. I will move into board comments. Mr. Means.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the students that received the awards. And every time I see the amount of first, second, and third places our foreign language students achieve, it always amazes me how well they do in the regional competition. I'd also like to say I agree with Mrs. Smith. Bethel Park is a great place to live and I've been here for thirty-two years and I love it. It's got a mix of people. It's got all sorts of things to do, different... It's a very interesting place to live. However, it's also unfair, I think, to place the whole burden of this impasse on the board. The board has presented reasonable raises. They've made reasonable proposals and the teachers' union doesn't like it. So where do you go from there? I know we have a lot of great teachers, but we've also had six teacher strikes and it's something that needs to be resolved. And I agree, we do need to come to an agreement. However, it's not all a one-way thing. And I just hope we can reach that agreement as soon as possible.
Thank you. Mrs. Ruhl.
I just want to congratulate all the students with all of their achievements that we've heard tonight. And I want to mention that Steel Center is, they're in partnership with a program right now with U.S. Steel. So they are really branching out. It's been, I think, a year, but they just renewed that partnership with U.S. Steel. They're also going to be increasing their welding classes because there's such a great demand for welders. I mean, the trades are really hurting. And within the next five years, there's going to be quite a big retirement of the people who were schooled in those trades. So they are really updating their curriculum to start covering a lot of these classes. They will also be offering these to adults. So they're going to be expanding their evening programs too. So if you know of anyone who's interested in, you know, building their trade expertise or whatever, they should be getting in touch with Steel Center. Also, we'll be having the Shasta program this Saturday and it's always such a great rewarding program to attend to see. Our students honored to have overcome some challenges. They can be very diverse, but it's always good to see how they've turned themselves around and progressed. And we'll be doing that this Saturday.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Campbell.
I want to express my most heartfelt condolences to the Cipriani family with their loss of Leah. I was aware of Leah's service, you know, as far as like with Tri-Community South back in the nineteen seventies, when I first got involved with Bethel Park's Tri-Community South, with Upper St. Clair and South Park at the time. That's part of the reason why I'm a doc, you know, from her. But she had, you know, incredible legacy of service with her. Like not only with, you know, with her work, but also like EMS. She touched more folks in this community than you could shake a proverbial stick at. And we're really fortunate in this community that we have so many people who are really keenly interested in trying to help and doing what they can to give back with their time, their talents, their energies, their resources. You know, and it's refreshing to see that we do that. The folks came here tonight. You dedicated your most valuable asset. You dedicated some of your time to come here and I'm grateful for that. We had a lot of different opinions, you know, that came up to the mic. We hear some over the last couple of months, a lot of different and various opinions on a wide variety of things. But the important thing is every voice is heard. Every voice should be heard. Concerns should be made. This is our community. We all care about it. We want the best for it. Remember our touchstone, why we're here tonight in the school board, in a school board meeting. You know, students, we want the best quality education. We want a safe environment for our students. And we want the best for our community. I think that's just the best way to say it. So I give each of you a challenge, you know, even, every single one of us can do this. Look for the ability to go ahead and give back a little bit. Look to go ahead and give and touch a little bit more. You know, volunteer fire department, the EMS system here in Bethel Park, the library, you know, doing what we can to support and sustain the teachers or the aides or community resources like our parks, our police department. There's so many ways we can give back and do much. And I thank you all for coming tonight. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ammons.
I have no further comments this evening.
Well, I just have to give a shout out to the musical Forty Second Street was just phenomenal, phenomenal, as always, as always. I also am excited to see Black Hawk TV up and running on Channel Nineteen, Comcast Cable anyway. I don't know what the other cable company, but that was a vision of ours when we incepted the new high school and it's just so rewarding to see that up and running and those kids on there doing their interviews and TV presentations. And thanks again to our wonderful PTO, PTAs, PTSO groups, as always. Without your participation, we couldn't do what we do for the students, the teachers, the staff, everybody in the schools. I remember being there a few years back and I'm glad to see that you all are continuing with the same and even adding new programming. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.